Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sandy Gosley and I'm Principal Planner with the Olmsted County Planning Department. And after two and a half years, I think we're here. Again, just for the benefit of the folks that are out here in the audience that maybe haven't sat through all of the meetings that we've had in the past, just to let them know. Claire, do you want to...do you want me to flick the slides?
Go ahead and do it.
Yeah, go ahead and do it. So first of all, we're talking about the General Land Use Plan and we affectionately call it GLUP. And basically what it is, it's just the primary set of land use values that define the community's vision of how, when, and where we grow, where we protect crop land, things like that. And it's been something that we've had in place, this particular version, since 1995. And we had just tons of input from folks living in the townships, living in the smaller cities, living in Rochester. And, you know, basically boiled down, this is what folks told us is important to them about living in Olmsted County. Next slide. The GLUP is a dynamic document, especially for those of you that have been on the county board for a number of years. We typically review this every five years and update it to make sure that any new demographic trends that seem to be happening, or changes in employment, or environmental needs, that we're accounting for those things. As part of this plan update, we were directed by the Commissioners that this would be a minor update. Basically, the community values that are currently in the plan, everybody was in agreement that that's still what we'd like to think of as being critical for the county. So the directions that we were given, as far as this update goes, first off, to add a transportation factor to a land use modeling system that we have, so that investment in road areas, or safety concerns that we have, things like that are being considered when we're looking at where things should go in the county. Part of that was to take a look at some new data that we were...have just been able to get ahold of, that looks not only at the trips, trip length for people to get to work, but also looking at shopping trips, going to school, things like that, to see how far people are traveling to get to where they need to go. A third thing was to eliminate the resource protection potential suburban land use. And that was sort of a...everybody was in consensus that that just hasn't been working and we need to try something else. To fine tune land use plan amendments and policies and procedures, make things a little more streamlined and not having any unnecessary roadblocks in the way. And then finally, to reorganize and clarify portions of the land use plan to help explain the connections between what the characteristics of Olmsted County are and the land use plan policies. And again, that helps make for more consistent decision making because we're kind of all working from the same page and understanding, you know, key things that are going on in the county as far as our geology, our water quality, things like that. We've had numerous commission and agency involvement touchpoints here. Obviously, we've met many, many times with you all, and I do really want to thank you for being so engaged in this process. That doesn't always happen, and you guys have given us tremendous feedback, as have all of these other...oh, sorry, Claire, next one. There we go. As have all these other groups and agencies that have been on here, the townships have really helped play a part in this stuff. We've met a couple of times with the Prairie Island group, too, to just introduce those folks to, you know, welcome them to the community. Here are the kinds of things we do, how can we work together on things? We worked with housing folks, what can we do to, you know, help the housing crisis we have, things like that. Public input, put in feedback, unfortunately, you know, some of the COVID things kind of put the kibosh on types of engagement processes we'd normally have. But the PAC team has been fantastic to work with on getting the word out on what we're doing. We had sort of a, I don't want to say a special website, but it was called off separately from the rest of the planning stuff, so people could get to it much more easily. We've had the draft chapters out there for folks to review and comment on it. We've got a number of different links, so people could submit questions to us, or any kinds of comments or concerns that they might have, and they could sign up for meeting notices. So that, as the process went on, they would automatically get something from us letting them know what's up there. We had what we call story maps out there, and they were some really neat, very visual types of little slideshow, shall we say, helping people understand what's going on in Olmsted County as far as our economy, our geology, our...the folks that live here, things like that, to, again, see what kinds of things come into play when we're working on these land use plans. And then again, PAC did some great press releases and social media blitzes for us to try and get the word out to folks. So the next couple of slides will kind of give you an idea of the changes or updates that were made to the plan. We added a number of chapters on county characteristics and land use connections. How do these things tie in with what we're doing for land use, as well as other different types of planning efforts that are going on through the county, to show that we're all trying to work together, be on the same page, and not undoing what somebody else has been working to do. As we mentioned earlier, the resource protection potential suburban land use designation was eliminated. We've added a new planning principle to the document that addresses the connections between transportation and land use, to make sure that if we're investing in roads, you know, land use is being considered as what should be going there and not overinvesting or underinvesting, and considering the types of maintenance that might be needed for those areas that may get more residential traffic, for example, on it. We added a couple of staff findings that you'll start seeing on your staff reports that will take a look at transportation considerations, as well as the amount of suburban land that is being added, and how that plays into what the parameters of the plan lay out. So you kind of know where to...it's like a checklist, you know, where are we sitting here? And then finally, one of the things that you had asked us to do was to put in language such that suburban land use plans would only be considered twice a year. And we did talk with...and emailed back and forth with folks at RAB, the Rochester Area Builders, as well as some folks from consultants, consulting firms, to find out what times of year would make sense so that we wouldn't hinder the building season and people would be ready to go. Next one. So as part of this, obviously, from what you've seen, we added lots of pictures to this document. But one thing that does go hand in hand with the plan itself is the future land use map. And what this map does is show, based on the policies of the plan, here's where the land uses are. You'll see the difference between these two are...the map on the left is what we currently have, the map on the right is what's being proposed with this plan update. So that kind of yellowish tan colored area, that's that resource protection potential suburban, so that's no longer going to be noted on the map. The only other change was up around the city of Orinoco, was changing their urban service area boundary to accommodate the wastewater treatment plant that they're working on. They slightly changed the boundary and threw there to make sure that that would be incorporated into the city. Next, as far as refinements go, next slide, please. Tried to standardize some wording. We found that there were some inconsistencies and it just made things a little confusing, so we tried to work on that. Some transportation standards were updated as far as commercial and industrial development traffic goes, and again, it's just keeping up with the current language that's accepted across engineering groups and stuff. A more complete description of interim development, which is development that takes place within a city's urban service area, but it's not annexed yet. So it's getting those agreements between the township and the city and making sure everybody's on the same page as to how that area will grow, and allowing for some development to go in before it is annexed into the city. And then we also provided a more detailed annual review process. And what those annual reviews will help you do is see, you know, we'll take a look, what's been happening in the past year, what kinds of applications have we gotten, what things have changed, what hasn't. So you can determine, hmm, is there anything that we might need to fine tune for next year, or change some, because there are different market circumstances, do we need to add more areas for development, or is that not necessary, that kind of thing. Next slide has to do with clues model, and it's a computerized model that takes data that we do have. It doesn't account for everything by any means, as far as land use goes, but it helps us at least have a very consistent set of taking a look at what things are in certain areas of the county to know their suitability for a land use type. So as we always do, there are certain data sets that change regularly, so those have been updated. Some of the information on rare species that we get from the state, we had to remove that from the model because they've kind of changed how they do it, and it just...it doesn't work. That's not to say that those things will no longer be considered, it's just you consider them as part of the findings rather than as part of the model. We changed some of the suburban portions of the model, taking the amenities scores out in order to encourage infill development on, you know, on smaller farms, for example, that are getting surrounded by development, making it tougher for farmers to continue farming, so kind of opening some of those spots up for possible development, and to better protect some of the critical natural features we have in the county that, you know, help keep our drinking water clean, our surface water clean, things like that. Mentioned earlier, this new data that we have on household trips. And then the final change to the model you asked for was to weight the natural resource score, and those are things like those critical areas where groundwater is filtered and stuff like that, to make sure that they aren't getting lost in the model, and getting overweighted by demands for housing and stuff, because those features are...you mess with them and they're gone, and so...
You're talking about like decorum edge?
Yep, exactly. Yep, exactly. Next changes were just general wordsmithing and formatting. We wanted to create a much more readable and user-friendly document, so for example, the current one, there are maybe three pictures in the whole thing. This has lots of maps and graphics to help people like me who like having pictures and charts tell a story instead of reading through all the words. And it's also 508 compliant, which means that for the American Disabilities Act, it's set up so that folks that have to rely on an electronic reader to help them read online documents, this can be read by that. There are a couple of things that there's just nothing we can do about that, but we've, you know, put notice in there that, you know, if you have problems, please give us a call and we'll work through you with that. Next one. So as I mentioned earlier, we've asked for public comments. We finally got one the day of the public hearing at the County Planning Commission, and it was a gentleman asking that we consider exploring the cultural immigration and timing differences that we see in the county, just because we are getting new residents. And not everybody has the same cultural experience as the folks who have been here for a long time. And, you know, they thought that that would be an important thing to consider. We actually did have something somewhat in there already because of recognizing that we are seeing some different trends as far as who makes up our community, but it's more of an end general nature. And in our discussions with the County Planning Commission about this, they felt that actually the zoning ordinance update might best respond to what this gentleman was asking us to take a look at. So next slide, our recommendation to you is that you approve this tax amendment. So your action can be either approve, deny, or continue it, and we did draft a resolution for your consideration. And with that, I'll take my questions from you.
Any questions, Matt?
Sandy, we talked about suburban development, the township officially voting on them, is that in the...
Yes.
...year?
Yep.
That you didn't have listed?
Yeah, what we have talked about, and what we've got in the plan, is that that would be as part of the application process, is that that would accompany it. Yep.
That's what, thank you.
Yep.
Sandy, do we generally have orderly annexation agreements between surrounding townships and the urban areas?
We have some in place, yes.
Not all?
Not all, no.
And just a comment, as I've gone through this, and I really appreciate the redesign, the pictures, the clarity on the...so I compliment you and the staff, Ben, terrific job in terms of...it's the best I've seen in 20 years in terms of the depiction, being able to just go through easily, understandably, the wording, clarity, et cetera. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
The ones we do have orderly annexation, Cascade, Kalmer, Rochester, Haverhill, and...
Marion.
Yeah, the big ones.
Yep.
I mean, nobody else touches the city of Rochester, Alplaz and Grove.
Yeah, but...yeah, but we are starting to see some of the small cities be interested in some of this stuff, too. So for example, Byron, you know, we've done some stuff with them. And recently, the city of Stuartville was asked about doing some interim development there, and so we were making sure, you know, working with the city and with the potential applicant in the township to get that all squared away as well.
Perfect, thanks.
Any more questions, Matt?
Back to you, when you weight your scores, transportation and that. Is there a score for urban growth and wellhead protection and what's the other big one, sewer districts? Is that...
That really all falls into that urban service area delineation, and so...and in fact, a few of those things that you mentioned are specifically what the cities use to determine what...where those growth boundaries are.
But is there a score by staff on that stuff?
No, it really isn't, because the clues model only...I mean, yes, there are scores underneath, but that's not what determines the urban service area boundary. That's not to say that we don't look at what those underlying scores are, just to see, for example, are there wetlands, or, you know, something like that. But it doesn't come into the play the same way it does for resource protection or for the natural resources and suburban development.
So essentially, if a development wants to take place within a city of Rochester, they have their own regulations?
Yes.
So they can...they may or may not have a decorum edge, I think they do, but...
Yep.
They could choose not to have a decorum edge.
Yep, and same with all of the cities.
Yeah, that would be bad.
Yep, all of the cities have their own.
Sheila? I probably should know the answer to this, Sandy, but do each of our cities have a bit of urban service area for future development?
Yes. Yes, some more than others, but yeah, they all do.
And where do we stand currently with the amount of acreage available for service area?
That's something that traditionally, and I will say, there have been a couple of exceptions. Traditionally, the urban service area boundaries that you see in the county's plan reflect what those individual cities have in their municipal plans. There have been a couple of times when, and this predates me, so this is more than 35 years ago, that there was a discrepancy, I know, for example, with the city of Rochester, some of the stuff up northwest, that since has worked its way out. But it's, you know, the cities have been really cognizant, as has the county, about, you know, everything works so much better if we work together and try and get all on the same page, that they've bought into the idea that if they're changing their urban service area boundary, and you've seen a few of these over the years, that we come in here and they do a land use plan amendment for you to take a look at and say yea or nay as to whether you think that that is appropriate to reflect on the county's plan as well.
Yeah, Sheila, just the information, there was one time during our tenure when EODA got very aggressive on the urban...EODA got very aggressive on the urban service area, and you kind of questioned it, and they said, yeah, okay, we'll shrink it back. We probably won't be able to service all that with services in the next 25 years. So it's kind of what it boils down to, is what's your growth, when do you think services would be available in that area, and that's where the debate comes from. And she referenced city, there was a time when the, you know, 75-year kind of urban service area, and they say, come on, that's...that doesn't work. So that's the kind of discussion that ensues.
I think, you know, you probably recognize my comment or my questions coming out of the earlier discussion in the HRA about what do we have for potential development for affordable housing? And I'm trying to...and I know that's not directly to the land use plan, it's indirect to the land use plan, but that is a challenge that our whole county faces and every community faces. And so our urban servants' development with the two and a half acre lots ends up very seldom being affordable housing.
Right.
And so I'm just trying to get my head around what do we...and we heard from the city that they don't...the city of Rochester today, they don't have very many lots available for development. And we have some interest, even on this board, of doing broader development of affordable housing.
Right. The problem with affordable housing is, and I'm going to be pilloried for this, is everybody's in favor of it on the other side of town, or the other side of the county, just not around me.
Yeah, I get that, too.
And one thing that we do have, even though the cities have their own land use plans and they're not bound, you know, by state statute, for example, to have their plans, you know, be in sync with ours, we do still have a number of policies in the plan with regard to things like housing and whatever, to just give them that nudge and say, you know, you guys really should be thinking about this kind of stuff, because it does impact the county as a whole, yeah.
Right. One last, to Matt's point earlier in HRA, is the Community Land Trust involving those properties in the Community Land Trust has been terrific for the county and city of Rochester. And so looking for plots like that, that are big enough to do it, which is kind of you scale and you get all kinds of advantages.
Well, we have them.
Yep.
Somebody's got to get the momentum to do it.
Right.
You know?
Some more money to...
Yeah, get some money.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, anything else?
I'd just like to echo everyone's comments that this is a much more readable plan, took a long time to get here.
Appreciate it. We did a lot of work, and yeah, we're happy with it.
That's fantastic.
Great, thanks so much.
So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anybody likes to speak for or against this amendment. Second time. Come on up, introduce yourself, even though we know you're on record.
Roger Mueller, 3210 105th Street, southeast Stuartville. I don't have a comment of for or against, but I just have a follow-up comment about what you mentioned, about having affordable housing, but then have it on somebody else's property. We see that a lot with the same comments on windmills and all of that type of stuff. And being from Stuartville and having either one of the largest trailer courts in the, at least in the county, if not the state, what I'm...and I'm not saying this as a bad thing, okay? I don't want to come across as being someone who looks down on these people. I mean, I remember those days when I didn't have money either, you know? But I do understand the concern when...my concern is when you put these large, low-income housing units in an area, especially Stuartville, that adds a lot of kids into the school system, and there's just other community issues that come up with that. And the tax base to support that extra infrastructure, the extra kids in the school system and that, just doesn't come to cover that, the cost of that from that low-income housing. So my comment to you is, and my suggestion to you is, as you think about where you put these, especially in the smaller towns, you got to make sure we balance those low-income housing units with an X amount of higher-income, single-home families to help with that tax base to cover those extra services. So that's all I had to say about it. Just be thoughtful of where you're putting it and what else is going to be developed in that community in order to help with the tax base to deal with those extra kids in the school, and especially if there's going to be a referendum to build a new school, and who's going to pay for that? So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Would anybody like to speak for or against us? Yes, ma'am?
Diana Freeman, Olmsted County, Rochester. So first comment on affordable housing. I am living a four-bedroom home, two baths, and I pay a lot less for my mortgage than these people in these two-bedroom or one-bedroom apartments, which you call affordable, so I don't think they're affordable. I'm staying in my house. Secondly, we have a lot of crime in my neighborhood, we're in northwest Rochester, and it's been that way for a long time. And the police here in Rochester have talked to me multiple times over the years when I've had to call them about different issues with neighbors, or the problems in the neighborhood, and they have told me that rental units, which you call affordable housing, which these big, you know, buildings with lots of apartments in them, the renters bring in a lot more crime. And that's what the police are telling us. So that's why a lot of us don't want them in our neighborhoods. And we want to live in our homes, we've lived there all our lives, so...
Thank you. All right, anybody else like to speak for or against us? Anybody else like to speak for or against us? Third time, anybody else like to speak for or against us?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move the update.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move forward with this update tax amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. All right, so now we're going to move to the Olmsted County zoning tax amendment. Well, that'll clear them out.
That wasn't boring enough.
But this is what government does.
This is 99% of what's...
This isn't even the exciting part.
Okay, so...
I had to wait a second. It's a mass exodus.
Dear your lighting, I know, it's very exciting. Okay, so hi, I'm Kristy, I'm with the Planning Department, and we're here to talk...
Okay, so hi, I'm Kristy, I'm with the planning department, and we're here to talk about O two thousand twenty-two zero zero two TA, which is exterior lighting standards. This was initiated by the Almsted County Planning Advisory Commission. So we currently have very vague exterior lighting standards. Um, it's one line, it states, "Any light used for exterior illumination shall be diffused or directed away from adjoining properties or public roads." This is very difficult to enforce, and it's very difficult for a property owner who's trying to put up lights to understand what it's meant. Uh, in our research, we looked at several ordinances from cities and different counties, and we chose the best culmination of these ordinances to fit our needs. So we're replacing the entire section, we do have exceptions built in for holidays, government agencies for safety and security lighting, emergency lights. Um, but in all zoning districts, the maximum intensity of a foot candle limit at the property line is a half a foot candle.
I got a question for you.
Yep.
You know, I'm an old guy, and when I drive in, these new, uh, this is going to sound old guy-ish, but these signs that are blinking with them, the different, uh, LEDs, you know, that are advertising boards, those just damn near blinded. They, for me, some of them, I mean, you go, and you can't hardly see, is this going to address some of that? They're very distracting.
This is really meant to address lighting on buildings and on properties versus, uh, sign lighting. We do have different sign, um, sign standards, and the DOT also has, um, standards for the illumination of electronic signs.
Is that a problem?
So what is a foot candle? A foot candle is, um, a foot away from a surface, it's a square foot of light. Um, we're adding an exhibit to the ordinance to show you what is meant by, um, the light cutoff and by waste area and what you can't do and what you should do. Um, this is an example for your benefit to show what we mean by our limits. Uh, the hardest thing for the planning commission to understand is what, what, what did we mean by a half a foot? It's, it's hard to find, so this is actually my backyard, and, um, where that fence post is, um, that's point zero three foot candles, so that's well below our limit. And you can see there is still some cast off, um, beyond the fence from that back light, but it's still within what's allowed for what would be our ordinance. Um, the limit is actually where that blue can is, um, is where the maximum limit would be. Um, to give you a perspective, I could read under that light, it's a fairly dim reading light. And so, um, we're not talking about no light, there is some reasonable standards, I believe, in place that we're setting.
Oh, you, really what you're asking is for neighbors to not shine security lights in other people's bedroom windows.
Yeah.
Nobody'd do that.
What? I don't think on purpose they would, they would think about that, but I think if you try to sleep in that bedroom, it's, you know.
Yep, and, um, and the purpose is, is we don't get too many light complaints, but when we do, it's really difficult to enforce, and we have, um, a case that should be enforced. And, um, and this will just allow our attorneys to have a specific standard in which to, to set the precedence at. And so, um, commercial uses are going to be held to a little bit different standard, they're going to have some height limits, some specific angle cutoffs, those are very easy for them to provide in their lighting plans as part of a conditional use permit.
So, um, the commercial uses are, actually, I, I wonder about more because as we have, um, more and more enterprises that are open late into the night or all night, and they brightly light their parking lots, their staging areas, like gas stations, and some of that light, it just feels like we have a, a broad amount of light pollution now coming from that, even though it may not extend. It, I can't see where this, where your, where the ordinance we're proposing, um, has much impact on the overall light pollution. I can see where it's not, um, annoying to a neighbor maybe, but the amount of, uh, light out of a, a truck stop or a big box store, um, there's a lot of light that comes out of those.
Um, sure, yep, um, the ordinance isn't designed to address, um, light pollution, but it inadvertently will because we are requiring lights to have angles and cutoffs, the, so the lights will be pointed down versus up and into the night sky.
There are limits. Only applicable outside the city limits.
Correct, yes, our ordinances do not apply within other jurisdictions. So it's only allow, this is the ordinance for our jurisdiction.
So is this, is the city ordinance more restrictive than this, equally as restrictive as this?
Um, I would say very similar.
Okay.
Um, very, very similar, um, the, um, we pulled the, the standard of point zero, of point five from Scott County, but we reviewed the city of Rochester, which I believe was point two.
Okay, so we're last, city's, city's more restrictive than.
City is more restrictive for residential areas. Their, their light standard varies based on the use, so, and if you're adjacent to a residential area or another business, you can have a higher light standard than if you're just against residential.
Of the county, there are, um, yard lights that are quite bright, I don't think they conform to what you're proposing here. You're driving.
And they probably will at the property line, you're talking about a foot candle, we're measuring one light above, six inches above the ground at the property line. And so even, even a yard light will most likely conform to our ordinance.
And we don't, and we don't, there's no ordinance, no change in ordinance as far as that yard light, lighting up a township road or a county road, it's fine to light up a public road with a private light?
Uh, there's standards for where those lights need to be set back and how much light could light up that, that road.
It's been typically out in the townships, I see these yard lights on, on the power poles, which are basically in the right of way.
Right, this is for property owners, no, not utilities.
Right, but most of those yard lights are, are paid for by a property owner, so.
That's what I'm thinking too, seems like they're on utilities.
I'm just curious, I'm not.
Kristy, I was also thinking about, when I think about the, for example, the streetlights in Stuartville, under the globes that shine, seem like it's, yeah, they shine a lot of light up, um, which is kind of wasteful in a way, I mean, they're, they're pretty, but, um, is there anything in this that, it says shielding, specific angle cutoff, is, is it trying to get the light down?
Yes.
Not just out into interspace?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you, do we, because now that she brought that up, that is interesting because when they put in, when they redid sixty-three down there and they put that in, I think they took out every other one because it was bright, I mean, bright, or they dimmed them down or something like that, but do we even have purview over that?
No.
Yeah, so, I mean, really, even if we want to do something there, because it's Mendat, it's Mendat's road, just like when they close intersections.
So.
Well, that was a full paw.
Did that nice, as nice as we possibly.
So, um, this ordinance will be enforced as, um, as our ordinances are enforced, we're complaint-based, and, um, we will be informing any new property owners that are putting up new structures or coming in with conditional use permits of the lighting standards.
Okay.
Um, there's just two findings that support the adoption of this ordinance, the rest don't apply, so it's in the public interest, it's just providing nice, clear standards that everybody can adhere to or at least understand. Um, the planning commission voted in favor of the zone changes, and they held a public hearing and nobody spoke. Um, and it's your job to hold the public hearing and suggest any further changes and then adopt or make the final determination, and also, um, there's a resolution document for you.
What are the consequences for our violation of this ordinance?
Um, we try to get voluntary compliance, and if that doesn't work, we, um, eventually would turn it over to our attorney's office.
That doesn't answer my question.
So a typical violation is a misdemeanor.
Correct. That's correct, typically it would be a misdemeanor, criminal offense.
Criminal offense.
Is, uh, you know, enforcing this, I'll probably vote for it, but is enforcing this going to end up being a thing like the noise ordinance? You know, like we used to get noise ordinance, and it had to be so many decibels at the property line and people work, but it just ends up being a great big hassle.
I suspect this will be driven by complaint.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but probably the difference in my mind is that the noise ordinance usually hears somebody's having a party and then if somebody complains and then, or somebody's working, they complain, by the time we enforce it, the action's done. This light is on every night.
The one that came to my mind was whiskey bones.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
That was more than a party.
Remember that, yeah, a little more.
Whatever.
Um, we aren't expecting, I mean, we, we have a, a tool in order to determine whether or not it's in violation or not, and our standards are providing us what the measurement guidelines are, so.
I, I get that.
It's a little bit easier to, to be able to enforce rather than noises. Um, we, and we have also talked to Roger and worked with the townships on adopting these ordinances.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, would anybody like to speak for or against us? Second time, would anybody like to speak for or against us? Third time, would anybody like to speak for or against us? I'll entertain a motion to close it.
Move to close this.
Aye.
Here we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thoughts, motion?
Uh, move the text amendment.
You have a motion, can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries, thank you, Kristy.
That is different.
All right, something new. Approved bond issuance by the city of EYOTA to one hundred degree, eighty degrees for the Von Wold facility.
I'm trying to assess this one.
I'm going to kick this one off. Good afternoon, Chairman Tine, Commissioners, my name is Travis Gransey, I'm a deputy county administrator supporting health, housing, and human services. I'm here today just to introduce the third and final public hearing for our board meeting today, which, as Commissioner Tine already noted, is a bond issuance for the one hundred and eighty degrees. Just some background real quick, I mean, I think, uh, many of you, if not all of you, are aware that one hundred and eighty degrees operates the Von Wold shelter that's located in Rochester Township. For several years, uh, they've been making efforts to refurbish or rebuild that facility. Um, and they've tried a number of avenues to do that, and they've finally, they've landed on one here, uh, and that is that the city of EYOTA has agreed to, um, offer a revenue bonds to finance the construction project that'll occur at their existing property, basically to rebuild a new shelter on the existing property while the old shelter continues to exist, and then, um, in the end, you know, replace that facility. And then Minnesota law requires the county board to hold a public hearing and pass a resolution approving the issuance of the bond by the city of EYOTA, and at that point is where it gets over my head. Um, so, uh, Tom Canadis here, he can answer any questions around that part, but.
We actually have no jurisdiction, we're just approving this, with, you know, we get our stamp out and do that, that, it's totally up to EYOTA.
Again, I'll defer to Tom on most of this, the last thing I'll just mention, and maybe why I'm here to introduce it, is just also that we, as Almsted County, do use that facility. Um, we find value in having a shelter in our community. So, you know, from a health, housing, and human services perspective, I mean, this is something that we're happy that they're here, we're happy that they're able to provide that service to some of the kids that we serve in our community, so. If you have any questions around that part of it, I'm your guy, if not, Mr. Canadis here to help answer other questions.
Any questions?
I'm good.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In effect, is this is a public-private partnership then between the private entity of one hundred and eighty degrees and the city of EYOTA? That they are.
Not really.
They are doing the bonding for, um, for this private enterprise?
I guess it probably depends on your definition of public-private partnership.
It is a public.
No, it depends on your definition, I think you're right, because honestly, from what I, my understanding is they're only issuing the bonds, the city has no role in the oversight of the construction of the new facility, maintaining the new facility.
They won't own the building.
They won't own the building, right, it's all being done by one hundred and eighty degrees.
Isn't this similar to when we, uh, did this for Olmsted Medical?
Heating Center.
Revenue bond, they were called revenue bonds.
I believe years ago, we did one for the Stuartville Care Center, often a nonprofit organization.
We got no skin in the game, EYOTA doesn't have any skin in the game.
No, correct, just conduit.
To approve.
I'm sorry, I think we got to open a public hearing yet.
Public hearing, correct.
We're going to open a public hearing, anybody want to speak for, that's fine. Second time, would anybody like to speak for or against us?
He's an old man.
Funny, a third time, anybody like to speak for or against us, they'll take a motion.
To close the public hearing.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How we're looking for it?
All right, I'll approve it, or motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Carries.
Chair, could I make a request that we, um, ask Mr. Gransey to speak with one hundred and eighty degrees to get a better sense of the scope of what they're intending to do and whether or not they will be seeking state bonding for this project? Thank you.
All right, that's the extent of the public hearings, and it's still only two o'clock, so.
Yeah?
Moving rapidly.
All right, consent agenda, approve the August second minutes, approve change order number three for the justice space remodel, approve contract to house Dodge County detainees at the Almsted County Adult Detention Center.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
I got a question.
Let's go Sheila first, she was first.
Mr. Chair, I believe there was, uh, an intention stated earlier in the day to ask to have the contract with Dodge County detainees taken off this agenda for future, for more information for the board.
移到 discussion item?
Which I think was moved to table it till a future meeting. The old guy at the table, at the end of the table might have something to say.
Sheriff was going to be here.
Were you looking at me? I, I, I'd like to hear about it, I don't necessarily got to move it to another day, but I had.
So would you make a motion to remove it to this discussion, I want to, well, discussion.
Is that what you want me to do?
Okay.
All right, can I get a second, can I get a second on that?
Second, sure.
Okay, so we got, we got a motion and a second to move that item to a discussion item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the first two consent agenda items, can I get a motion to approve that?
A move to approve, uh, A and B of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So now we'll go to that, uh, Dodge County detainees thing, Sheriff, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about it?
Happy to, I guess, uh, it's an agreement that, as we talked in the admin committee meeting earlier today, um, that we would have with Dodge County. Um, currently, the sheriff in Dodge County has had a contract for a number of years, I guess I wouldn't have a clue on how many, but a number of years, um, with Steel County to house their detainees, and before that, they actually were housed here. Um, again, I don't know what the gap was or how long it's been, I don't know if Brian even knows, uh, I just remember that a long time ago. Um, there's been, uh, as we talked earlier today, there's a couple of things that I'm familiar with. Number one is the sheriff over there, uh, and again, their numbers aren't, aren't really a challenge to us at all. Um, and Brian can talk more of the numbers in a second, um, but the two things that I remember in talking with Sheriff Rose about is, number one, uh, when they have detainees over in Steel County that have medical issues, they, they do their medical work over here, so they go to Steel County to pick them up, bring them here to do the medical, and then bring them back to Steel County, it just, it isn't solving any other challenges there and just creating more work and more distance, obviously, transporting. Um, and then the other one is that Steel County is going through a remodel project right now, and they are not able to house, um, all of their detainees, not that there's that many, but they're running through that challenge right now in Steel County, so Dodge is looking for another place to go, and obviously logically, it seems like, uh, our facility is the place to go, so, I don't know if that helps a little bit.
Well, my question was, I seen this on the consent agenda, and I'm not on the admin committee, and I didn't really understand. My big deal was, I mean, if we got the room, that's fine, everything, I want to make sure we recoup our costs. My whole concern was that I always thought, I don't know what you're getting, sixty. that I always thought, I don't know what you're getting, sixty or sixty-five bucks a day, so I can't remember what it was in here, but I always thought that we were like a eighty bucks a day is what it cost us to house somebody. So I was my sole concern in this is that we were subsidizing Dodge County.
No, no, and the cost is actually higher than that. Uh, the actual cost of housing detainee, however, uh, we're not losing anything. And Brian, you can describe it a lot better than I can from.
Yeah, we're not adding any hard costs. We're not adding any more people. We're not, our staff, we're not opening any more units. We're just adding people to our existing units. So really, it's costing us maybe ten to fifteen dollars a day by housing them. Cause we gotta pay for their meals and some water. That's the only expense that's gonna be added to us.
Economic analysis tells you as long as you're covering your marginal costs.
Right. We're trying to offset some of our costs.
So you don't have to add any jailers?
Oh, not to add any.
Or whatever, we can't call them jailers.
The numbers again are really, really minimal.
That was my sole concern. So other than that, I don't need to hear anything.
One to four females, maybe potentially ten to fifteen total. So it's really not a major issue.
Mr. Chair, Sheriff, have we uh determined what volume of, of detainees we expect from Dodge County?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. It could be anywhere from one to three, four females. Um, and then grand total, maybe what, ten to fifteen times?
Ten to fifteen a week, a month, a year.
A day.
Ten, ten, ten a day?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that, yeah.
And then the contract, if for some reason our population increases and we cannot, they know that we might not be able to house them. We're not gonna add, again, Commissioner Beras, we're not gonna add any staff. We're not gonna open anything extra.
So when you prepare your reports for us on jail occupancy, would you, would you kindly start delineating which are Dodge County, how many are Dodge County and how many are Olmsted County? Detainees so that we can monitor that. Do we have a time limit for uh, is it a three-year contract?
It's a yearly contract that will move annually.
Okay, do you, do you anticipate that once Steel County's jail is complete that they will?
So they started housing here, like the sheriff said, they're remodeling Steel County and they can't house females right now. That's what started the conversation because like the sheriff said, it's so much easier for them to come here if they have a medical appointment, go right over to mail. So that started the conversation on having a contract for male and female.
Just, just for the record, I learned in admin that if any of these detainees have medical issues, that's a Dodge County expense, not an Olmsted County expense.
Of course.
And I learned that the rate that we are charging is set by the state, so it's not negotiable. It's if we take this rate.
Wondering about that?
Yeah, I agree, but we, so if we house someone, let's say in Good U County, for some reason we have to put someone in another jail, that's what Good U County charges us back. So it's what we do.
The state determines that rate to try and.
That's a state DOC rate.
Okay.
DOC sets that, right. Alright.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, next up on uh discussion decision items is informational. Olmsted County mid-year priority update from Internal Services.
Hello, good afternoon Commissioners. I'm Mufreya Romakataram, uh Olmsted County Chief Financial Officer. Um, so the Internal Service Group uh would like to provide the county board uh kind of an update about our strategic priorities and to relate, that relate to operational excellence. Um, we will share information on how we plan, adapt, and respond effectively and how we use resources effectively. I will start by providing you a quick update regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Then we're gonna have uh Matt Miller provide us with an update about uh physical space needs. Then Debra, Eric Miller, uh who will share information about climate change, sustainability, resiliency, strategic direction, and uh as you know, uh transition for our elected leadership. Um, and we finalize with uh Lisa Morris Hemstaller. Uh, we'll conclude with uh an update about One Olmsted. Um, let's see. I went too far. Um, this first slide here is a, a, a brief summary with regards to our American Rescue Plan Act. And as you know, we have received from the US Treasury about uh uh thirty million dollars, thirty point seven million dollars allocated to Olmsted County. Of that, about twenty-four point eight million, or about eighty percent of that total, uh has been allocated to a number of initiatives that you have approved. Uh, leaving us with about twenty percent or close to six million funds yet to be allocated uh to this very specific initiative. In the next two slides, I'm just gonna review with you uh what are those initiatives that you have already approved uh back in twenty twenty-one and again uh earlier this year uh in May. So uh start with uh the first large amount, which um I consider myself kind of uh blessed, uh although other people may, may feel differently about this, uh with regards to this generational investment in housing, I think is very significant uh initiative that you have put into place, into motion, uh which have a number of components. A big chunk of that uh is about ten million dollars that you, you will be entering into a agreement uh with the Regis treasury foundation who provides uh kind of the glue together, if you will, or administrative services to the housing coalition. We achieve a coalition of governmental agencies, nonprofits, and so forth. Uh, and the purpose of that ten million is to uh help us with a number of priorities. Number one is create home ownership, homeownership opportunities. Uh, increase homeownership for those individuals of color. Uh, increase housing option for uh those earning less than fifty percent of the area median income and preserve existing affordable homeownership and rental housing. So that's kind of the ten million within that sixteen point one. Then we also have the internal county program, uh growing affordable inclusive neighborhoods uh gain um which about, which is about five million dollars uh allocated to that program. While we have only issued ten thousand dollars worth of grants under that program, we're internally continuing to, to look into how to possible make some modification to the program to make it more effective. As you know, we have the issues with housing costs going up, interest rates going up, uh and the, the issue with uh having the components necessary at a reasonable price to build a home. Um, also including that sixteen point one million dollars is the uh a million dollars used to purchase a one of five Broadway, which happens with the uh another allocation with the HRE funding of a million. And finally, there's a hundred thousand dollars improvement that we made to the warming shelter to make it uh viable into the future. So that's kind of in a nutshell, the sixteen point one million. Obviously, it's a lot of money while we have spent uh very little uh about it yet. Uh, that's for item. Um, the next item, we have the Ospo Nation Center. Uh, we have put aside that those dollars and we have used them uh to pay for construction costs of, of the new uh nature center. I'm sorry?
They came over the lounge.
Okay. You what, huh? Okay, well, I guess that was.
You have a problem?
What's up, dude?
Hey, man!
Anyway, uh moving forward.
What a day. What a day.
Muted.
Don't get no better, man.
Um, so next to that, we have uh technology improvement for service delivery regarding our health housing, human services, uh services. Um, we're already into contract with a vendor uh uh and moving forward with phase one. I believe we're already into phase two of that. Um, I believe we have already out of the million, we have spent about half of that, or five hundred thousand or so. A great partnership with the workforce training uh center, uh with workforce development program. Very specifically, the Bridges to Construction. Uh, it's a multi-year program for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars um to bring individuals into trade, uh academic support, wraparound services, and things like that. We have paid very little of that. Only one uh invoice have come through with uh thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, Chester uh High Source System District, uh we have allocated five hundred thousand for that system. We are in, in, uh, we have completed engineering uh to understand, one needs to be repaired, one needs to be replaced, one needs to be upgraded. Uh, but very little investment have been made into that yet, other than the e- engineering costs. Uh, we have invested about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars or allocated six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in personal costs related to uh cover increase in FTEs in the attorney's office and, and um to help us with the backlog created by COVID. So we have a number of FTEs. This number, of course, is for a number of years, not just a one-year uh amount. And also, we have added a social worker liaison to the schools within this figure. Uh, and finally, on this slide, we have a hundred and seventy, seventy thousand dollars payments to nonprofits regarding uh vulnerable population. That includes uh a legal assistance for Olmsted County as well as uh another uh agency. Uh, I'm gonna stop here for a second, just in case there's questions, otherwise I'll continue moving forward. Okay. If this wants to move forward. There we go. Um. Um, earlier this year, this is the list of the, that we approved in May. Uh, we have the uh three million dollars, uh another kind of generational investment with the groundwater protection and so health initiative. This is another uh significant item in our list of initiative. County i- is moving forward, setting up policies, processes, and application uh detail uh w- with regard to this program, but there's nothing functional uh yet about it. So that, that's coming into the future. Uh, we have allocated another four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to a wastewater collection system uh some of the rich states. That's in partnership with the Cascade Township. Um, and again, uh those numbers are uh in, in in um in, uh they potentially may need to be revised because of additional costs that have been uh because of uh the conditions they're in the market today. Um, we have the five hundred thousand dollar childcare cliff pilot program. Uh, program is under development. Looking forward uh the, at the HHH uh com- committee in September to provide an update as well as hoping to initiate a program and start making payments uh January of twenty twenty-three. But so far, uh no, no expenses regarding that program. Uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that's a combination of the uh, the two school attendance, social worker liaisons. Um, I believe we have hired one of them. This is a two and a half year. If you think of those, those numbers being large, but just for two FTEs because it's two and a half years uh budget, if you will. Um, and I believe we have hired one individual and the other one is in progress uh to be hired. Um, we have the mental health association worker, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Again, this is another funding through the end of twenty twenty-four. And, and finally, from this list, the hundred and twenty-five thousand to expand the uh family service Rochester contract for therapy for, for children. Also uh through the end of twenty twenty-four. Again, I'll stop here for a second, give an opportunity to ask questions, otherwise we continue to move forward. Okay. And then it's come to uh my last slide when it regards to the ARPA funding. As you can see, uh while we have this initiative, uh we have taken the approach, uh thank you for the opportunity to do it this way. We have taken advantage of the US Treasury guidelines that allow us uh based on a calculation created by the US Treasury, you know, by Olmsted County uh to calculate what is the potential revenue loss to the county during the pandemic. Uh, so based on that, we have taken advantage and rather than waiting for this initiative to start maturing and issuing the checks, we have uh uh taken ourselves and reimbursed ourselves for existing costs for public health and public uh safety costs. And then setting aside that levy that will be saved, that property tax that will be saved because of that, and use it in future years to fund the initiative we just listed. So a- a- as you can see, we have spent about twenty million dollars through June thirtieth versus if we were stayed in the path that we were before, we would spend less than four million as of the same time. Uh, so that's a drastic comparison. Considering that potentially the US government can decide to negate and ask for those dollars back if we're not using them. This is a great opportunity, approve and allow through the rules of US Treasury to do that. Um, so uh meaning that we have unspent, if you will, about ten point six million dollars.
Now that ten point six, four point eight, we haven't even allocated yet.
Yeah, so the five point something that was in the beginning, we haven't allocated yet. Yes, that's correct. So with that said, then I'm gonna uh step aside and uh let's see, Matt Miller is next.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Matt Miller, Director of Facilities and Building Operations. One of the components of the long-range space plan is specifically on justice space. So we have been in construction for the last calendar year. You approved money last year to do construction this year in a couple areas of the government center. We've been focusing most recently on the fourth floor of the government center. Essentially, we're creating space for court administration to move down to the fourth floor in collaboration with corrections. Happy to say that the design team and the construction management firm has been diligent, working through supply challenges. We plan to move court administration starting a week from Monday, so August twenty-ninth, and then we expect to complete that move by September ninth. And then corrections is coming up around MEAs around uh October twentieth to move them to the fourth floor. What that allows us to do is then move to the fifth floor, where we intend to build a felony-sized courtroom on the fifth floor. The other challenge we've had to overcome is we're working in an occupied building. So while the county attorney's office may say different, we've really tried to minimize the disruptions. So we've tried to be done early in the morning and then do work off hours and stuff like that, so.
Time made a face.
It's not working so well.
And, and we realize that disruption is gonna continue when we move to the fifth floor, but doing the best we can in an occupied building. So that's the work that we hope to complete by uh late or late spring, early summer, twenty twenty-three. And then on the heels of that, we've been looking at what's next. Um, so as you heard in the board retreat, we're looking at uh doing additional work here at the government center to support justice space. We're hoping to complete that design work in early twenty twenty-three and then really start construction or uh work on the tails of construction finishing on the fifth floor to continue the disruption here in the government center for a couple years to come. Um, so happy to take any questions related to that.
And I personally haven't noticed any problems with the disruption, so. I don't know what you guys are talking about. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Of your, it's part of your um mindfulness practice.
Progress is good.
Thanks, man.
Yep, you're welcome, and I'll hand it over to Deb.
Thank you.
I couldn't resist.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Deborah Miller, Policy Analysis and Communications Director. I have two brief updates for you today in the area of analysis work and long-range planning. The first is to prepare climate change, sustainability, and resiliency plan for Olmsted County based on the inventory we completed in twenty twenty-one. So I'm presenting this on behalf of the three sponsors, Tony Hill, Matt Miller, and myself. So uh I think it was March of this year, we came to a committee at the Hall and presented the inventory that was referenced in the, in the statement there from twenty twenty-one. We identified more than four hundred and fifty activities either underway or planned in the county that have some impact on climate change. Many of those were not with the intention of impacting climate change, but they have some direct or indirect interaction. So for example, uh things like moving to paperless processes, we do those for process efficiency, for customer satisfaction, but they also obviously have an impact on paper usage in trees. So based on the inventory, then we have um now have formed a countywide climate task force. There is representation from all areas of expertise at the county um that is relevant here, and I have to say it is tremendous. It has been really fascinating to meet some people that I didn't know and that have some great skills to bring to this work. So the group has been meeting every two weeks for the course of the summer and they have to also, you know, review the inventory and then also looked at plans from many other jurisdictions that we can learn from. And then the summer, Kat Cobell, who is a fellow with the Environmental Defense Fund, was with us for about ten weeks. And she did a lot of research for us to help us think through different strategies and most importantly, she developed a template that we can use moving forward. So I, I put a visual there of the things that would go into this template uh assessment tool. So we would look at what is the primary benefit, co-benefits of a strategy that we might want to employ, and then of course, things like what is the cost? Uh, how much impact does it have on climate change and how feasible is it? As well as whose responsibility would it be to lead? So at this time, I don't have any significant content updates. The work is just underway, but uh knowing that this is a, a board priority for this year, we will come back before the end of the year and provide you with a more, you know, substance-based um update on what we're doing. The plan itself will not be done until twenty twenty-three. Questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead. And then my second brief update today is a plan for our organizational strategic direction and upcoming transitions in our elected leadership. So I'll cover the first part and then Lisa will cover the second part. So uh the countywide strategic planning team is now underway. Um, so again, like the climate change work, this is about twenty people from around the county. Lots of areas of expertise. There was quite a bit of interest in this. We asked for applications to be on the committee and we had um many people who were interested, which was very exciting. So that group has been um learning from the strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results conversations that you all had in the spring as well as the department directors in June. And now planning for similar opportunities for uh staff and continuing with the internal analysis of our so-called environmental scan. What are our strengths and opportunities um from an internal perspective? We know that not everyone from an employee uh perspective will be able to participate in an in-person conversation, so we'll be looking at multiple methods, including surveys and other ways for people to give input. So again, I don't have a lot of substantive update today, other than we're underway, things are progressing as planned, and we'll keep you keep you posted.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Would you remind us of when you what the timeline is for the strategic strategic planning process?
Absolutely. Commissioner Kiskaden will move into the external phase later this year, and that'll continue until early twenty twenty-three. Then we'll look at mission, vision, values, and start developing some of those drafts. And the plan is for the plan to be complete by the end of twenty twenty-three and to be basically going to implementation twenty twenty-four.
And the external phases around getting community input into our process?
Correct, yeah.
And are is there an extensive community engagement process that you're planning or give us just partner agencies, broad public, what all of the all the above, other jurisdictions?
Yep, Commissioner Kiskaden, yes, I think all of the above. We don't have a firm plan in place yet. We're still working on that, but and also communication along the way. So there's input and then also output, sharing what it is that we're doing and drafts and things like that. So yes, I think it will involve jurisdictions, community, as well as just members of the general public.
Okay, Heidi?
I just wanted to add for Commissioner Kiskaden and the board, we have monthly meetings with the group of commissioners that is likely to be the admin committee next year scheduled. And this is one of the topics that we intend to keep that group really up to speed with so that when we have new members come on, presumably we'll still be here next year, we'll be able to help us guide through that. So I just wanted to know there'll be more opportunities.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any more questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Time Commissioners. I'm Lisa Morris-Holmstedler, representing Administration today, and I have the final two priorities to share with you. They will both be brief. First, as you can see in front of you, I'd like to highlight the twenty twenty-three transition into elected leadership. All of you know know about this and the fact that we are going to be having numerous new commissioners coming in soon. And we recognize that there will definitely be a learning curve for each of these newly elected officials, and we plan to provide them with a strong foundation through six training sessions, just six. So we've listened to each of you, believe it or not, over the last year, and we've taken your feedback and your ideas, and we've put those together. And these are just a couple of a really long list of items that we plan to train on and educate around. So you can see here county board structure, county operations, department and program introductions, open meeting law, Robert's Rules of Order, Heidi noted strategic planning, technology, One Olmsted and legislative efforts, just to name a few. All of you know where to find me, so if you have additions that you'd like to add or you want to talk a little bit more about the details that we've got got put together, please reach out. I'd be happy to have those conversations. And then.
We thought nobody cared.
See, we were listening, you just you didn't even know.
How about that? Twenty years later.
And so our final priority today to update on is, as you can see, it's the integration of One Olmsted goals within each department, including defined and measurable plans. So in twenty twenty-one, that was the first year that we set up meetings between One Olmsted, which is our countywide diversity, equity and inclusion work, and each department director. That time was dedicated to review One Olmsted goals and identify and define specific goals for the services and systems unique to each department. In twenty twenty-two, we've added a mid-year check-in so that we can start reviewing goal progress. Now, another interesting way that some of the departments are identifying and measuring goals is through the development and support of department teams of champions. So these teams are kind of organically created through volunteers in each department who can help move their department diversity, equity and inclusion goals forward. So we have many of these teams already throughout the county. They have a variety of really creative neat names. We have the county attorney's office over here, they have the E Team, for example. And these teams are uniquely positioned to support department leadership along with One Olmsted in the identification and measurement of their specific department DEI goals. And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to the YWCA. We continue partnering with them. This is our second year. The YWCA of Minneapolis has over a hundred and thirty years of equity expertise in the state of Minnesota, and they offer us education, tools, diversity, equity and inclusion, strategic planning time, and we are grateful that they continue to support us through this work.
That's interesting.
All right, and that concludes what we have for you today.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Chair, I just want to check with Deb. I think that was the last of the updates, yes? Okay, sorry. One more, so one more in our series through the summer, just, you know, one more HR internal.
At all.
Okay. So we're closed.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, next up, set truth and taxation dates for the twenty twenty-three budgets. Oh, boy.
Well, as we have said in the past many, many times, by law, we're required to set up some dates, times and locations for budget adoption meetings, certification of preliminary budgets, as well as final adopted of the budget. So in front of you, you have for September twentieth of twenty twenty, at three P M, we'll have the opportunity to certify the Olmsted County proposed twenty twenty-three levy as well as the Olmsted County HRA proposed levy. On December first, at six P M, the Truth in Taxation Public Meeting. And finally, on December twentieth, nine A M. the morning to adopt the final twenty-three budget and levy.
Okay. All right. Make a motion to set those as our dates?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you. Next up, review and respond to the statement of interest for the former Seneca property.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Pete Easton, Deputy Administrator with our Fiscal Development Division. Tom, and actually, I'm going to invite Tom up here with me just as you may have some questions about some of the legal aspects of this. But so Tom and I are today are going to work through with you the next steps with the statement of interest for this former Seneca property. As you recall, last fall, you asked staff to develop a statement of interest process to generate the ideas from the development community about what could be done at at Seneca. So particularly as it relates to complementing Graham Park. So we launched that process, we contracted with Rochester Area Economic Development to launch that process this spring. But it's a little bit of background about process. We're not here today to evaluate or review those app proposals as they are still considered private information, except for the names of the developers. So today is more procedural in nature relative to where we are in the statement of interest process. We will be seeking action on the next steps in the the process and whether you would want to move forward with a non-binding MOU with the highest ranked proposer, which, as it was indicated in your packet, is Titan Development. So due to that, the private classifications of the statement of interest data, we're shared all of those proposals, all four proposals we received with you, but it wasn't done in a a public setting. So we wanted to clarify that point that for the public that the board has seen all four proposals. And we had a team of county staff and staff from Rochester Area Economic Development to independently evaluate each of the four proposals, rank them and score them based on the criteria in the statement of interest. And we, the evaluation team unanimously voted the highest as the Titan Development. Because the 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 names of the the other proposers, the respondents to the statement of interest is public, I wanted to share with you who those are, some are in our audience today. So the first, other than Titan, the the next proposer was submitted by the Curling Club of Rochester. We also had a proposal from Family Service Rochester, representing seven nonprofit entities and other local partners. And we had a proposal from Noble Development Company. So just for the public record, those that's public information. So we do want to thank those who submitted the proposals. It's a lot of work to do that. So we want to recognize them and thank them for submitting a proposal. So before I move on, I wanted to give a little background, kind of where we've been since two thousand and nineteen when we purchased the property. But before I do, any questions? Tom's here, any legal questions or process questions for us before we move forward?
Okay.
Okay. So with that, a lot has happened since two thousand and nineteen with the Seneca property. As you can see, we started out with a a clicker.
Or you want to just?
Yeah, so we started with a canning plant, and then we moved into demolition. So within three short years, the demolition happened. We also included in that, if you remember, removed coal slag and and did other environmental cleanup related to the property. We restored the corn tower water or gear of corn water tower and the wellhouse and basically made the site ready for development. So that, I want to publicly also thank Matt Miller and his crew for making all that happen. Tom had a big role in that as well, just to make sure we're following the process. So that's that's been done since two thousand and nineteen. So maybe the next slide, that's what it looks like today, as you know. I'd be remiss if I did not share with you, and I don't want to resurrect past angst, but we also spent a significant amount of time, the board did, in nineteen and two thousand and twenty to develop this for a transit village. So again, a lot of work happened there. It didn't play out the way we were thinking it would, but just wanted to remind that we've come a long way and it did a it has done a lot of work with that.
Good and good reminder.
I'm sorry. And, you know, concurrently, for you remember, there's we're and we continue today, there's a lot of work in upgrades to Graham Park, improvements to Graham Park and improvements to the master plan concurrently. So in these three plus years, a lot has happened. More recently, I mentioned the contract we have with Ready. They are our point of contact and the lead in the statement of interest process. They've been very good to work with. They've are our point of contact for the media and anybody else interested. So I thank John Wade and Kurt Mustumara here also for Ready. So thank you to both of you. So with that, I just wanted to recap that. So now it takes us to the action items that we're seeking from you today. First one is really kind of procedural to really acknowledge, kind of complete the statement of interest process by acknowledging we received these four proposals and acknowledging and accepting the recommendation of our highest ranked proposal being Titan Development. So that's step one. From that is the next step was really the the piece of this that you would need to act on, whether you want to enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding to with Titan to continue negotiation process for a development plan. But step one, if I could ask for actions on those first two points, acknowledging the proposals we received and how we rank the this as an evaluation team.
Yeah, so we're looking for a motion to acknowledge that. So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so that carries.
Okay, and so this next step, and Tom can fill in maybe better than I can, and maybe, Tom, you want to walk us through.
Sure.
What this all means relative to the non-binding MOU and a possible closed session, depending on the actions of the board.
Thanks, Pete. Tom Canan, Senior Assistant Olmsted County Attorney. So we've indicated in the agenda then that the next step, given that there's been a positive vote on the first part of this, you're authorized to move into closed session then to discuss. There's a section under the open meeting law that basically allows local governments like counties to close the the meeting in order to determine the asking price for real property to be sold. You'll recall, actually, we did this when it was determined that we were going to make a offer to purchase the Seneca property back in twenty nineteen. There's just a couple of things that are unusual that we need to follow. I need to have the Commissioner Tine as the chair basically read. Technically, it says the the description for the property. I think I've given you the parcel ID numbers. The legal descriptions are quite long. I don't think it's absolutely necessary that you read the legal descriptions. But if you read those one at the proper time, we then need to make sure that the meeting, the closed session will be tape recorded, and Lisa's assured me that that's ready to go. We need to make a list of the members of the county board and all other persons present in the closed session. And again, how this will work is, as Pete described, is simply for you to have an open discussion in closed session about setting a price for the property. There's no predetermined outcome with Titan. Certainly, it will be trying to explore that whether we can reach an agreement, which is acceptable to both sides. If at some point there is an agreement that's reached that's acceptable to both sides, we'll come back and explore that in another closed session. And if there's a determination in that closed session to actually approve some development agreement with Titan down the road, then you'll move into open session and then approve that at a future open session of the County Board.
Do you have exactly what I'm supposed to read?
There is a resolution. There's also a portion I can give you mine if you'd like.
Exhibit A.
Yeah, it's exhibit A. You see there's property tax ID numbers that associated with that.
Okay. So I should read the property tax, property tax ID numbers, don't have to read all the rest below it, right? All right, so what we're what we're considering is is whether we're going to enter to a closed session regarding property tax ID number six four dash one one dash one one dash oh seven nine four six nine.
You know, I added my own description of what they are. You're certainly welcome to add those, so people on on the tape know what they are.
The primary parcel, former site of Seneca Foods County facility, and also property tax ID number six four dot one one dot one one dot zero two five nine three zero, the strip of former railroad right away along the spur line. And property tax ID numbers six four zero two four four zero two one nine eight zero, six four zero two four four zero two one nine eight two. Lots adjacent to the north side of the highway fourteen, including the former Seneca lots and lots contained, lots county acquired through tax forfeiture bound burdened by MINDOT right away easement. All right, so we're looking for a motion on whether we want to enter or go into closed session to discuss this these properties.
Correct. Right, to enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding with Titan, simply to explore whether we can reach terms on a development agreement.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Stand here or we move?
I think we're staying here and we're clearing the room.
We we do have another room available. If you would prefer, Mr. Chair and board, it's kind of up to your choice. You can stay here or we can move over to conference room two if you'd like to.
Mr. Chair, could we have a little break on our way?
Sure. It's two o'clock right now, we'll meet at two o'clock.
All right.
Just so I can see what, because right now, I have to say, they they said this, they offered a levy, because I have nothing to say. I think I'll bring it back to you.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah.
You want a copy of the movies?
Yeah, I got it. It's hard to pick around. I've got to email over to, and I just realized, but I just wanted to see what, you know, because right now, yeah.
You know what's interesting to me is visible.
You know what's interesting to me is, there's a little, you know, people have been election buttons on it. They came in from Trump's house and their fair elections. We didn't even confront them on that, I don't know.
It's like, it's like in the legal when we voters, where they felt, no, it wasn't legal, it was one twenty-five law. So we have felt like she shouldn't have confronted them.
So are we going to a different room?
Alright, very good. To be honest, we were hoping that.
It's just so, it starts so mysterious to me that even in this forum. Speaking as former newspaper guy, that just doesn't seem like information to be created freely.
I'll look at this point.
Good to see you both, thank you.
I've got a few things I want to get off and I can't. Here, you have an hour. Why do you say that? I have been timely like. Yesterday we were. I was telling you, you're the city councilman. I only have thirty minutes and, and friends then he said. He said, you see that every time. I said, well, they asked questions, that's not my fault, you know, but we came in. See, I also, it's good with us. We have a good. You say.
I'm still, I'm still looking for a project, man.
You can look for, I don't say. Maybe one thousand twenty-nine. You're, if you're at one and a half percent. Three percent, one percent's full of money. Most of the enterprises came, they want to build a little twenties, you know, a person here. Where exactly, no, everyone, person that come. It's, it's a real problem. Only one of them has had by expansion opportunities. I'm for it, everything you can train the better.
Right.
The history, the council. But I'm for it, we can drive a bus for twenty-four dollars, you know? That's, that's a big question.
I'm saying, so, so in Rochester, how many people?
And that is what it's, as far as people.
That's two twenty-five. But that's not workable, that's total, so probably be. One percent of ninety, nine thousand. It'd be less than that.
The ninety thousand people unemployed.
Let's say it's five thousand. And so some can't work, but that always know all those.
I'm just saying, I'm going to say, you know, so.
Work versus, let's say this work versus seven, it'd be less than that, so there would be, we've got a hundred twenty-five. If there are, what percentage of that really don't work? So probably. You've got all the seniors, children, you've got all those groups, so it's probably fifty thousand. Yes, it's fifty, fifty's the number, fifty and forty is about that number come here from other places to work.
Four hundred fifty, four thousand five hundred people.
Let's say.
Are, are, are not working. And they can't, and four thousand five hundred are ones that can.
We're spit while we're straight now.
I know, I'm just saying.
You haven't said.
So, and how many never educated to be able?
Or how many have mental illness, or how many have?
I mean, that, I'm just, I'm just trying to break it down, trying to.
How you doing?
John, how you doing?
What's going on?
Well, I know I missed the meeting, I was looking for it.
Oh, it was, it was fine, day one.
It was, yeah, a long time ago. Which one were you coming for?
It was on the genuine three o'clock and.
Yeah, I'll start at three. We don't know except for.
Thought there was a parking.
Hey, I didn't, where you find that?
Parking, it's out here at the, out at the end, all, and into the hallway, you do that.
Edward one oh four.
One oh four, yeah.
Was that county or was that city?
County parking lot.
Would be.
Haven't been right here every other time I went.
Was it? Wasn't on this?
Maybe that, does that start at seven?
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, six thirty, seven, but no, I don't operate a computer, so I had. Wait, go on that.
So they did have a, or the land use plan?
Yeah, people. But soon they adopted it. You from the county?
No. Personally, if you were with me, no.
Ready, aren't you sort of ready?
Yep.
Well, you're getting ready for it, but.
Ever ready, ever ready, ever ready.
Going to be some grabbing jam. Know what the hell happened to their. Suppose that's you, you get a little couple.
That's a special lot. Little pair.
Son of a whore.
Does he?
This is, my son-in-law gave me this, he was, he was.
Ranger did, maybe at six, I think they're all closed.
Ranger business is passed up.
They have any.
Oh, yeah, so, you know, Jeff. So he's going over to Africa, go hunting. Here, this guy at the city, evidently takes a group of military people.
Really?
Over to, over to Africa.
Did you say where?
And, I'm not exactly sure, he pays for everything, hunting with them.
Wow, it's killing.
What?
It's just killing, it isn't.
Yeah. And then he pays for all their, pretty kill to get mounted or whatever it's hard as, you know.
It's expensive stuff, like you're saying.
That's expensive.
That's expensive stuff.
Hawkins and.
Yeah. Hawkins and.
Littenburg and some of them, but they could, they were.
Duets?
Yeah.
Ron Barash? Oh, and.
The only guy that paid for the whole bunch was Hawk.
Hawk paid a lot.
Fucking one of them.
Well, Duets, you ever see this?
Yeah. Duets was something to talk and see him.
He wanted to this place and it was this line, but.
Chip Suck is another good one.
Never claimed you've been driven.
It's like a waste of money to be.
Oh my God, and then you got to dust them. Your vacuum, I don't know what you do in your house. I mean, those things are on the, every, you'll ever see Hawks or remember that.
You'll go back and look there, them guys get some tricks on each other all the time.
Yeah, I know.
But what is that still set up for?
They're, they're having, they're having a, a private meeting on something, so.
That's, it was a development for the Seneca site.
And they're.
Oh, I seen that on the schedule.
And then you're, you're going to come back and.
That ain't going to sit there empty for.
They're using a void on there or do something.
Yeah. Up forever.
No, I just thought I'd see somebody else. I'm sure it got adopted.
It did.
As, as it was.
As it was presented.
Yeah, they were the ones that had asked for all that. Well, a chest that got put in, when I was running. One of them, chest could have made it, chest could have. Kind of like our rural service district.
Yeah, yeah.
There's already twenty-five businesses in Cheston.
That's right, there's more than people think.
Twenty-two hundred people go to, sorts of just, write this, no, whole bunch of money.
Ready?
One of them worked up that old greenway, plants or nothing.
Sorts and sorts is a big.
This is the brother-in-law and his son, and it's.
Sorts and sorts.
Yeah, well, it's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Like he said. Dick, Carol, I think they're still.
Dick's still around?
Yeah, look, it's still alive.
My God, you talk about a nine-line guy.
Real perky, I would say.
No, but compared to how perky that guy was.
Yeah. Like. They must be big industrial.
That's okay.
No, the, the brother-in-law has got this fabrication, hitch and those, whatever, that's an act. And he said they're putting in three, he asked me where I was getting my powder coat and I'm for a motorcycle. Recently, they'll, T E C, size we need, they're putting three ovens.
Is that right?
Is that your? Yeah, that one. Yeah, man. Most of that is like a lot of, prepping is all, polishing, there's all the, all the, getting it ready. All the components kept up.
Yeah. It's the first easy part.
That's the easy part, is getting a prep so you don't have oils or anything on it.
Prep is all the game.
Watch it, kind of bubbling.
That aluminum, that's right, and the motorcycle world is, that's the aluminum.
How's your business?
We're okay, we're just, you know, nobody's getting vehicles.
We're sitting and waiting, I know what's going on.
You know, our, our presentation, I think we run our current property records and license person and our past property records license, run the cleanest elections in the state of Minnesota. And Minnesota is one of the cleanest election states in the United States. That being said, I think we should seriously look at this stuff that we got and, and respond. I mean, I, I'm not saying that there's anything in here that I believe or I think there's anything funny, but I think these people took time out of their day to come here and show up. I think we all.
Need to respond to those things that we know are incorrect or correct.
Not be judgy about it, that's coming from Jimbo, you know, I'm a judgy guy.
I don't know if we needed that emotion level, but I would second that, that, that they ask a question, let's give them an answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, what form would you, would a letter be sufficient?
I think a letter is sufficient, and they'll probably come forward, they're going to come forward in three weeks anyways.
Yep.
Let's get the letter out ahead of time.
Okay, so you would like us to prepare a letter that responds to the different issues that came up today? Mr. Chair, I suggest a letter and an opportunity to, to meet with Mr. Mueller, who's their, their chief organizer. And then I think if we can be prepared to answer, well, they'll be here for a public hearing, but if we can distribute the letter again to them at the public hearing, since we don't engage at a public hearing. I met with them, as they mentioned, two weeks ago, and they were a very polite, very civil group. They are earnest, they are concerned, they are hearing. If you, if you watch this video, which I haven't seen all of it, but a good deal of it, it has been refuted in terms of its accuracy, but they believe it. And so, and they're part of a national movement and a statewide movement around election integrity. They're very sincere people and I think we need to answer their questions and treat them with respect. And so I would like us to be prepared with a response at our, before our meeting and at our meeting, but also would encourage the continued conversations that have been going on with Mr. Mueller and our elections people. He's been, he was very supportive of Luke Turner. He was very, he, he, as you saw him chastise someone about coming to the podium at the meeting I attended, when people started raising questions, he would remind them, Mr. Turner is doing what the Secretary of State requires. So it was a very, it was a very amenable meeting that I hadn't, I hadn't known exactly what to expect. And I think we should, we should just, you know, be engaging conversation, be very respectful. I thought they were very respectful today and I agree with Commissioner Jimbo down there, that we should, we should answer. Mr. Chair, yes, we can do that, we'll do that. Then I think Mary Blair isn't in here, but I think she would back me up in saying, I think I have it right, that they have been meeting with Mr. Mueller all along and they're always open to meetings and we will just extend that again to meet with them as much as they want, as many times as they want. So yes, we'll do that and we'll have it ready before the next meeting, right?
Okay. Alright, can I get emotion good, Jerry?
So.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's that getting you out of here, right, it's five fifty, one.